I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome to the Town Manlius Planning Board Meeting for September 9th, 2024. We are in person and we are hybrid online on Zoom and Facebook. The first item on the agenda is the approval of our minutes from our August 26, 2024 meeting. If anyone has anything.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Okay.
Motion made by Judy, second by Arnie. All in favor?
All in.
Right, any opposed? Okay, motion carries and Aaron's abstaining. All right, the next item on our agenda is Damian Cornwell, 185 West Seneca Street, Manlius, New York, 13104. For cannabis retail, this is on our agenda for a recommendation to the zoning board of appeals for site plan and special use permit. The tax map number 106 point dash zero one dash zero seven point zero. And we've got Greg here, so if you want to talk just about your updates.
So after last meeting, we went back and because the architecture built a little bit. There's limited what we can and can't do with the building. We thought the most appropriate thing to do was to change the paint scheme a little bit. And also to modify this move over to front entrance, which is like the 1960s. So it'll be a nice wood shingle. We'll have some porpoises inside. A little more fashion. And we're going to paint the white with those blacks. That'll make those pop a little bit. And the brown, more like a tulip color, it's on there right now, or like a grayish brown. That'll blend in better with the stone. In addition to that, we modified the landscaping a little bit, added some more planting, some pastas in there, some hydrangeas and some bay leaves. Add some flower colors that we'll be searching for. Previous plan. Those are major changes. We had, we filled out the Form 33 for DOT for their approvals. It went down to them. And we'll work through that process. Evaluation was positive in that respect. And I guess tonight, we're here to hopefully get a positive reputation. The other thing we changed is the side. So this is pretty much to scale size wise. I think it's the right proportions, but it's 23 feet square feet, which was mentioned in the last meeting. As first we thought was allowable, so we brought that down to the size. So we're hoping for a positive recognition to ZDA. I don't know if the board's in position to give a conditional approval of some sort.
Um, yeah, we, well, we have to schedule, we have to have a public hearing.
Okay.
So we have to schedule, so I think we can schedule that tonight if all goes well here, but
That'll be great.
If you don't have anything else, I'll open up to the board for any questions or comments. I do want to say that we appreciate what you have done with the architectural on the building. It's amazing what some paint can do and then make it look a lot nicer. And I think the landscaping will even look better. Speaking of that though, when you were mentioning the sign to scale, since you have to come back anyway, we've got the sign that isn't conforming to size. I would just make sure that this drawing of the sign and the one on the left are both to scale and both match.
I'll verify, because we did this before we, the day before we got that.
Yeah.
So I'll still verify the proportion.
And the placement and everything, okay. Okay.
Can you say something about shingles that I missed here?
There's probably be, probably a shingle roof unless I can maybe find.
Just if the drawings, here's a show of standing seat metal.
Yeah, Mike, and the only, the only reason I might not do that is if I can't get this to match that.
Okay.
It'll look, it'll look kind of funky and you might as well just change the texture at that point.
Maybe if she was just shingles.
I said shingles because I'm afraid we're not going to find the exact same roof. If we can, and the board would like it, be metal, I think metal will be more appropriate. But if I can't find the match or match mostly, I recommend not to.
Right, what exactly will the sign say?
I don't know. I need to look at this a little bit more, I apologize. I think it was, it was up before, same sign.
Yeah, it's all the same except the logo is removed and that's per OCM state regulations.
Entrance both in the front and on the side, right?
Entrance will only be on the side.
Okay, so, or.
The front's only for intake, because that's the storage. So.
Oh, the front is the storage? Gotcha, okay.
This is not a customer entrance.
Okay, gotcha.
We saw in the notes, we got, you had a conversation about this. Sign, sign side requested 96 by 48.
That's changed. We got this after we sent that, yes, so don't, yeah, ignore that.
Yeah, it was.
It's 6.5 by 3.25.
Fine, I just was trying to align these two sets of numbers and come along.
Yes, so we actually don't have to worry about the sign for the ZDA either because it's, it's in conformance with the size now as well. I did, Rich Rossetti could not be here tonight, so he asked me to ask some questions on his behalf. So, and a couple pertain to the sign, so I'll start with those. He was looking at the state policy for cannabis sales and so he knows that the sign has to be approved by the state. He's wondering if this sign that you've submitted is approved and if we could get documentation.
Or license.
Of that.
Yeah, we have full license. It was part of the onsite question.
Yeah, like if you could submit that to the planning office, that was another one of his questions, if you have your license. And so if you can just submit that to the planning office, so it's on file.
Because we were dealing with the whole thing when they came. We showed them that. And said that we were still working on the town for a lot like the size and stuff. So we showed them that and we said, fine, so they agreed with that.
Okay.
I think what you also want is the entire approval list or form of state.
Yeah, he's asking like to have the operating, operating license on file with the planning office for the Town Manlius. And then, and then he also said he looked in the state document and he's wondering if there will be any other signs that will be visible from the outside of the building. Because it says in there that if there are, they also have to have approval from the state.
We only got one sign for approval. So yes, if we put up another sign, we would need to get approval from the state in order to do that on the.
Okay, and then he, like, I guess he was thinking like, are there any inside somehow that are like lit up or whatever that you can see from the outside or whatever? Okay, okay, all right, so those are his questions.
I mean, suppose you have a small sign of hours of operation or push to open doors on the outside, but they require state approval.
I think, I, my feeling is only if they have a label on it.
I think it's just like an advertising sign.
Advertising, yeah.
There's only if you have like your name or your logo or something, like an A-frame sign like for the hours.
We don't do A-frames anyway.
We can't really do A-frames because of the right line and stuff, but.
Well, any other signage that you might want to consider would have to be kind of run through the town anyway and we don't allow A-frame signs, period.
Well, or.
Like temporary ones that people stick out, like the flag. We don't, we don't do that.
We'll have some, we can A-frame signs.
It doesn't matter.
Do we have any provision for an opening sign, a grand opening or anything like that?
There's a banner, I think it's 30 days and then it's got until.
Okay.
You guys.
A banner, a banner for 30 days can come through the office.
Like a grand opening banner, something like that.
But I would imagine if it had anything related to the type of business or the logo, that would have to be approved. Or does that fall into the, it's an opening thing, so it doesn't have to be approved by the state?
For our code, you can have it.
Okay.
They, it's up to them to.
But it can't have the just breathe and the cannabis and all that stuff, right?
Probably not, yeah, I mean, we, we wouldn't, it would just be opening.
General information, yeah, okay.
We're now, are you going to have additional signs for like direction and stuff since that's not going to be the front entrance, for example, to direct people to the sign?
Nothing to stay right away. Nothing to stay right away. You know, we're trying to avoid that. I'm sorry, I mean, it just becomes very high. So we're trying to avoid that. We don't need any, there's no need for a stop sign because it's automatic. It's go like highways or that sort of thing. I don't think that, you know, for a safety standpoint, I don't think we need a sign.
You mean on the building, like
I'm thinking of, yeah.
A customer came to the front door and was trying to get in because that's what they thought and maybe there's a sign on the side window or something that says deliveries only enter, you know, something like that.
We did the thing this summer, we just had issues on the door. I mean, with the, with the parking being on the side.
They say, people, it kind of naturally happens. You could also put like an enter at that, as they pull in the parking lot where the, the door is under here or whatever, you know.
There's no other exit, emergency exit other than that exit.
No, I mean, it's something this small is going to require just one entrance. Yes, it's a square footage wide.
I see.
It's a, any options as well if they use, it's not going to require a particular door. So if it was a restaurant or something, it's not a requirement. So if it was a retail, it might require, if it's not that, it actually requires two entrances.
Um, I just had one other thing to consider for when you come back in that plan. Respect to the neighbor and again because of the RT district, so we're, we've got residential and transitioning, transitioning to retail over here. Could you consider some screening along the east side of the property between the parking, so where you've got that new grass area, so you've got the one tree there, some screening along there.
So just the.
What is already, I have questions about, there's comments about that too, so.
Yeah, so this, this is a fence right here, it's a solid fence. And then this is our property. Be clear, after driveway and that whole fence area is not our property. I don't have a problem with a couple of evergreen trees in there or something.
That's all I was thinking.
I don't necessarily want to take it. I don't want to head grow in there, but some of the.
No, I think some evergreens or something, just to break up the parking lights, like the cars coming in an hour and just the, you know.
Why not put like, like three?
The logistics.
Nothing too big, not an upper body or something like that.
Yeah, I, I don't know what everybody else thinks, but I was just thinking about that after, kind of, and I, I read it in the RT zone zoning somewhere and I can't find it right now, so.
Does that zone boundary require screening?
Does?
RT to R?
It, it's, it's a, it's a special use permit, so you, if you think screening is appropriate, then it, go in.
So, I know we talked about this once before, but it's really hard to read with the opaque hatch in the background. And I.
Are you talking about the green?
I'm talking about just, yeah, that this is more of the.
Are you talking about what we put up?
Well, having the back, having the image behind is a little misleading because that's not actually where everything is, right? That's just a clue to your brain as to what might be going on here. But, you know, we see the property line, but we really, I would really need to see an actual, like a survey with the fence shown. It just points to the end of that one line with a couple boxes on it of a square line type, and then there's an X, a couple fence lines that, like, but it's not complete, it's not labeled accurately. Like I can't tell where the fence ends. I thought it went all the way to the end where the dashed line is. There's no edge of pavement for the neighbors. Having this hatched and dotted background here, this line is, it obscures the things that we would need to see and it makes you want to know what's underneath it with the aerial photo. But the aerial photo isn't exactly what's there. Things get skewed when they are, you know, inserted at scale. As you know, it's not actually ready.
It was saying like skewed things a little bit.
And so this isn't really, you know, I don't think we're here for site plan review tonight, right? This is just referral?
Well, I mean, we'd like to, anything that we've got that we wanted to do because we're going to have the public hearing.
Yeah, like this drawing, we can't, and I know we talked about this once before. We can't react completely to this because you're covering up stuff that your brain wants to see as the aerial, which isn't the right thing to reference. And we need to know, you know, in order for me to make comments on what the screening maybe would want to be like between this parking lot and the neighbor's house, we have to know where the edges of the pavement are and what is there now and where the fence is. And it just says existing wood fence and it points to the end of a line which has square boxes on it for that line type and then there's some X's on it and then it changes to dashed and then it just ends, like you can't tell what any of it actually is.
Okay, so, and I'll, and I'll turn it off just for tonight if we, you know, if we need to discuss it. The, the great hash here is the limits of existing pavement to be reviewed.
Okay.
Everything that's actually currently is asphalt.
But that would be on a, there would be a survey and then an existing conditions plan and then a proposed site plan. And we can't, this isn't working.
I think I can do it that way too.
Like a normal drawing set.
Yeah.
Because this is a real project, right? This isn't, this is like more like you're just coming to get the initial feedback. Like if you're looking for final comments and review and potential, you know, final approvals, that kind of stuff, like we don't even know where the neighbor's edge of pavement is and there's clearly a significant conflict. And I would imagine DOT is going to want the same stuff that I'm asking for. I mean, it's just not, there's stuff.
The neighbor's pavement is on the other side of this property.
But I can't tell anything from this, looking at this, this way because it's showing a blurry image of a car and it's like, okay, well, they, they're probably parking on pavement, but that's not enough for us to go on. I mean, I'm not going to beat it, you know, I think you know what I'm asking for.
Yes, so we, we don't survey all the more properly. So I don't know where their edge of pavement anymore and I will know some of these areas.
But the edge that's on this property would know.
They'd line together. Currently, these, these pavements go together.
Okay.
It is literally a sheet of pavement.
It's really hard to see that.
From here, from here to here.
I do understand what, generally what's out there.
Yep.
But to look at this, we have to be able to react to the actual drawing. It shouldn't be predicated on all of this driving out there.
I will give you this, we'll leave this one alone. I'll give you another drawing, it's a black and white with some additional labeling and lines on it and that's for, that'll sure help.
Okay, well, I still want to see survey, existing conditions and proposed site plan. This, this served its purpose in the initial part of this process where you're trying to communicate the general idea. I don't think there's anything inherently wrong with the plan as you're proposing it, but in order to work out some of these other details, we have to be able to see what's going on here because like you said, it's a mess along the curb and the curb cuts and we can't tell. And if this green is being proposed as the grass area formerly asphalt, okay, but it's not just going to go straight to the edge here and then stop. I mean, that's just not.
We hear.
Like, at the corner.
We have to start cut this out and remove all this pavement.
Right, I understand, but are you really going to have this house to the west have a straight 90 degree angle at the end of their driveway? Or would you round that, like you've rounded with a radius this driveway?
They've got a very wide drive, if they want a little, if DOT wants a little more rounded.
But these are things that don't normally look like that in real life. Right?
My, my driveway does not have a radius on it. It's a residential driveway. Typically, these do. Versatile.
Like a lot of residential ones have like a five or eight foot radius on it.
I'm saying mine, but, but, sorry.
But.
Would you like a radius?
I think that.
Yeah, I'm okay with it.
I, it's not my parcel to say, and that's in the right way, so I'm assuming that DOT is going to say. But I think it looks a little awkward, I'll put it that way. But there's just some of these kinds of things that, that seem a little congruous with the pattern of what's going on there. But it, you know, there's, there's no grades or anything shown. And I know that you're not changing a lot of the grades, but traditionally when that happens, there's notes that say meet and match existing grade. Meet and match, meet and match, match existing.
Yeah, we've got it, we've got grade, here's a grade, a grade line existing.
But those are existing.
But we're not changing.
But then usually it says that. Right? Like the grading, you could have a grading plan on a, on a site plan. You can combine the layout with grading if it's really simple, but there's not even a note that says we're matching the existing grading. There's, it's to concept level and we need to see it brought forward into more of a, of a project like you'd see. I mean, I'm sure we could provide an example, but I feel like.
He knows.
Yeah, I feel like you know what I'm asking for. And I'm wondering why after the last meeting where we had this same conversation, I think this is the same paper here and we need to see a survey. Do we have a survey, like a full, regular survey? Wasn't it a photocopy or a picture?
It was, I don't know if we've received another one. It was something that we did ask for because it was like a distorted photo.
Photo of a survey.
So we were asking for an actual survey.
So.
I mean, we have copies of the original.
We need to have like, in a set, like a survey, an existing conditions and a site plan that includes layout and grading information. And so, I'll, I'll stop on that.
Well, I'll give details on the ADA or whatever, that's fine.
Yeah, we do, yeah, a detail sheet would be helpful as well. So, yeah, I talked about that. On the planting, I appreciate the fact that you came.
We'll get you, we'll get you a better copy.
So there may be a previous communication floating around out there that hasn't been addressed. Were there, was there a letter, was there a?
I think everything's been addressed, actually.
Do we have a survey?
We, we, we do have one in here who's going to give us a better copy of it.
Yeah.
Yeah, we made a survey.
And then I just want to make sure that everything is dotted and crossed because of the nature of the project, we're going to, it's going to be examined very closely. And the next round of drawings that come in and the next time that we see you guys, it sounds like it'll be public hearing. So we don't want to have any reason for people to be asking questions about stuff that can be easily resolved ahead of time. As far as the plantings go, I appreciate that you did that, improved some of the stuff. I had two comments on that. The peistea glauca, the conical, the spruces, they're going to get way too big for that spot. Like, they're shown at three and a half feet wide with five foot spacing trunk to trunk and those trees get seven to 10 foot wide. Like they're, they won't, they.
To our landscape.
And the amalac here by the driveway is a lovely tree. But that as well is shown only as eight foot wide and the trunk is only nine feet off the driveway. And a lot of times those, this species of that size that is being proposed is a multi-scent shrub, they're beautiful, but and I don't disagree with having something over there, but it's too close because it's going to get too big. I like the things that you've done with the architecture. I think the sign is great. I think my questions are about the sign. It's lit from behind. Are the hours that it's lit going to be the same hours that the business is operating? Because it. I don't know, I think that whether it's not going to want to be lit 24, like is it only going to be allowed to be lit when the business is operating?
That is going to be up to this board, if that's important to the special permit. For a special permit.
Okay, so I'm throwing that out there for the board to think about.
So we'll put it. I agree, it should be lit when it, during the hours of operation, yeah.
And then as far as the rest of the lighting goes, obviously.
Again, because district or the, the zone that it's in.
The rest of the lighting, you know, there will be people coming and going when it's dark a lot of the time of the year. We briefly touched on site lighting one point earlier.
You did like.
And so we have a lighting plan, all right, that's good. And then I think that was basically it off of my comments. And I, that's why I wondered if they came last time and I missed something because I feel like there was a bunch of stuff that didn't get done. Nope, okay, I'm done, thank you.
Just out of curiosity. Doesn't tell you anything about what's going on inside the store. How do you let people know what's for sale?
That's the very hard thing in cannabis in general because you can't even post things on social media and stuff. It's advertising, I mean, people are going to look for it. There's, there's websites where people can pull it to find your history, things like that.
So they want you to succeed, but they're tying your hands behind your back.
Yeah.
So you technically can't, so you can't even have a Facebook page like saying cannabis.
You say on social media, you're being shut down, but.
But if like some guy has a blog and they say, here's where to get it and.
We will have social media, you have to be careful what you post on there. Less about regulations, more about what the social media sites will allow and shut down.
Gotcha.
But word of mouth, I mean, we had the temporary last December. There's more just great stores across the state, so familiarity.
The state also has a dispensary locator that helps to someone can go on the New York State website and find. Because there's a lot, not in this area, but there's a lot of issues with stores that aren't actually licensed stores and, you know, other areas and stuff too, so. But.
We're shutting down unlicensed.
They're doing a lot better job shutting them down.
So.
East within five or six feet of the property line, sort of indicated, you did aerial.
The house to the east is probably, yeah, yeah. And by years, probably about five, six feet.
Black top which continues between the property are the occupants of that house sort of using the property on this project's property sort of in a matter of habit or custom or formal arrangement or adverse possession or who knows?
Believe it's a rental, I don't know for sure.
It's been that way since, I mean.
It's a history of.
Yeah, and I, I just don't, we don't, we don't need it.
Right.
You don't want to kick the, kick the can here if they don't have to, which is.
Right, I, you know, there's so much oversight brought to this cannabis and now you have adjacent property, I don't know if there's parked cars on them, they're going, whatever. It's not our same issue, it would be definitely, I guess, a planning board, but all the concern you bring into this property and you've got about 10 feet here apparently a third party gets the use out of neighborlyness. That seems, you know, we're, we're going to specify vegetation. It's going to be backed from the rooftop that is kept in place to the convenience of the neighbor. And it seems like an odd, out of control anomaly given all the other care and effort and detail we bring to this project.
Yeah, that's why I would like to see more detailed information on the plan and the survey up until, I know you're not going to go off people's preference. Sometimes though you see on surveys, and I don't know what our code says on the survey, but sometimes you, they'll put even the house out, the edge of the house outline, you know, pertinent stuff within 50 feet or.
You know, if you, if you, if you really want, what we can do is we'll go out and we'll shoot the distance from here to the house. At least I get this line right.
Yeah, yeah, that would be, that would be.
The survey does show the fence.
Yeah, for sure.
Well, which part of it? Like, there's three line types going on and I didn't realize.
The aerials feel, like you said, the aerial, the aerial is a great tool to sit there and see.
I love it for that.
In detail it's going out or, but it's skewed. It depends on where the, you know, what angle is the center. The survey is an actual survey. We did, we took the, the surveyor survey and then went out, we put it on the state plan coordinates and we made sure that everything lined up with the road. So it is the right spot. The exact distance from here to here, I, I just, I can't send one of my people out there, I can't.
I understand because it's private property.
Well, yeah, and then we did that once and we, I didn't, it was down my guy.
It's pretty close, yeah.
But I, what I can do is I can locate those off of here. It's a survey, you know, this year we know we're going to have a surveyor that.
Right, and I think some of it is just, is confusion in the CAD because the line weights and line types aren't consistent because the fence is starting with a square line type and then there's a couple X's and then it looks like but the line then turns to dashed.
We kind of do it because that's the survey and we don't, we don't want to manipulate the survey.
Right.
We add to it, so our line types are different. So our line types are different than a survey.
I understand. So that's why you would have.
I understand where, you know, we can, we can, what I would do, I'd leave this and I'd also put another plan with a lot more, uh, writing on it and other data. And maybe take the shading off and see what's there.
Well, that way you have a survey preserved with their line types because they're probably giving it to you as PDF anyway.
No, it's all okay.
They're still giving you a CAD file, but then you're taking that CAD file. They're taking that, you're taking the CAD file and manipulating it into your line weight and line size system. So I get that and, you know.
Well, actually, what we do is we take their CAD file, we don't manipulate it.
For your site plan?
For our site plan, we draw our own lines. So when you.
No, but you don't change the, like, color and line type of the surveyor's stuff to make it work for you?
No.
Well, it's a fair, and maybe point to the end of the fence because it's really hard to tell anything that's going on over there.
We can try to get some more of that detail. I can try, locate that, we'll locate that house off of this building so I can put that line.
It's, I'm more concerned about where the fence starts and stops and where the pavement starts and stops back there and up near the road. Because I can't tell, looking at the.
And the survey does delineate it, so he'll be able to do it.
I have, well, I have some of it, but. It's, if, if, I don't think that the general public is going to understand when it comes to.
I mean, if you take the aerial, you audit and just give us the architectural drawing, starting with the survey and laying everything out, I think that Aaron's point should be addressed.
Yeah, and that's natural, we're, we're, we're good. We're going to, one is this and then the other one is the, a line drawn. Uh, maybe, maybe some black and white shading if we need to.
And she's, and she's going to want to see also all the different planting and the like, labeled on the actual architectural drawing.
Well, and if you look at this, it looks like the wood fence is just one short section.
No, wood fence is actually, the way he's got it shown here, it comes from the house to here, to here, and then stops there.
Okay, but that's not what's shown on here. All right, I'm just, I'm going to stop because I'm repeating myself so much. But that's not what's shown on here.
So, I think.
That's just the wood fence.
Lisa, is it only the short section?
It's all this.
I think that.
So we will want to see screening.
That you sent before.
But I feel like I can't comment on a lot of these things because I'm not looking at a complete.
Yes. Or if you can just refer to the color.
I know, we've been in this chair, so.
Basically what she's saying.
You've been here.
So if, if you just can go back to the whole 155-28
Yep.
on the site plan and where it says we need the certified survey and all the, all the items to make sure, you know, just in, in the best interest of moving the project forward so when we come back after ZBA and have the public hearing, it would be great to have.
So you got survey.
I's dotted and T's crossed.
We got, we got what we have.
Yeah, just look at 155-28. And that was before you came on board and we, we had sent it. And it's the same usual stuff.
Yeah.
Okay. So let's, um, does the board want to talk about any of the variances? We're looking at, um, just to refresh everybody's memory. Um, there is one handicapped parking space that they're requesting eight feet wide by 20 feet. Um, handicapped accessible parking space instead of the required 10 feet wide by 20 feet long. So that would be one variance that we need to provide a recommendation for. Um, and the other is the lot coverage. And Lisa put it into actual numbers instead of percentages for us. So, um, so they need, um, 40,000 square feet of, um, I'm sorry, they need 32,117 square feet of lot coverage and they're requesting a variance of 7,883 square feet, um, instead of the 40,000. So, we've got the park, the handicap parking space and the lot coverage. Does anyone have any comments? Otherwise, I would entertain a motion for a recommendation. I, I myself am for a positive recommendation for both of those, so.
Finger on the skin.
I mean, I'll make a motion for that. Um, I think it's reasonable. I think as long as you're meeting code on the handicap size, I don't think, I think you're improving the coverage by removing a lot of that asphalt. I think that overall the improvements that you're proposing to the site are excellent and it will be a very big improvement to that property. So I would make the motion for a positive.
With that finding, with, with that, those findings that you just said, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Lisa's got it. Listen.
I second that.
Okay.
Whatever happens on your site, you require this kind of adjustment.
Yeah.
Yeah.
By the way, nothing is ever going to happen.
Well, and I think this is a, moving forward, this improves the, the lot. Yeah, will they come?
Well, the lot coverage, they're actually decreasing, so.
Right.
They, they just, it just still needs a variance because of the way it is.
And in the handicap parking, you may want to consider the ZDA way in whether ADA compliant parking is, uh, excluded from your regulations for the size dimension wise whereby the ADA regulations take precedent.
Oh, yeah, we want to, yeah, that's something.
You don't think, so you're not stuck with this every day?
Yeah. It doesn't happen.
Yeah, and that's, it's weird, it doesn't happen, but I, I hear what you're saying.
I mean, I'm in Northeast Mid today. None of those parking spaces in, in that handicap spot would match your requirements.
Well, and then there's, there's other rules and, you know, it's funny.
I mean, because honestly, in, in 35 years, it's the first time it's ever come as an issue where the town's code is trumping, you know, or it needs to be buried from, uh, the ADA.
Nineties that the ADA, yeah, the DOJ stuff came out and then it kind of became the gold standard.
Well, it also has the striped space next to it. So to me, that's, makes it less of a concern. But we have a motion for positive recommendation for ZBA. Um, we do not need to make any recommendation for the sign. They don't need to look at that because it's in performance. Um, so motion made by Aaron, second by David, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so the motion carries. We will provide a positive recommendation to the ZBA, which is September 19th. Um, so their meeting is September 19th. And we, um, I would like to keep this project going. So I would like to set a date for a public hearing. Um, we usually set our public hearings out a couple of weeks anyway. You guys have to go to ZBA first. Um, and so I'm looking at October 7th.
Yes.
Oh, we're, same date as today. No, she said the 7th, I'm losing the date today. October 7th. Um, so I'd entertain a motion for, to set the date for the public hearing.
Can, can we add to that, uh, the fact that since we have time, we can go to ZBA to have all the drawings and stuff.
Well, yeah. Really like. The deadline, what's the deadline?
It's, when will it be, October 15th or October 14th? We changed our meeting dates. Mine, this, what was it, we gave everybody change because we have so much.
A physical.
The 25th.
So we added a meeting.
It's October 7th.
It's always a Monday.
Yeah.
Can't do that.
Um, so what's our deadline for October 25th? September 25th? So then you'll have the ZBA the 19th. And it would, you'd get all of the drawings in. To get everything in by the deadline of the 25th so that we could also
Yeah, we'll look at the survey.
Yeah, I mean, if there's no, if there's nothing, you know, we'll see what the, how the public hearing goes, but.
And I'd be happy to, like, look at them.
Having the public hearing.
No, like when.
Well, Doug will read.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Somebody should, okay.
Yeah.
Um, because I think that the public hearing, I don't know, I'm guessing it's going to draw a lot of people. Maybe nobody, who knows? But, um, I think it would be, it would be a lot smoother to have it all.
It's wise to have everything all the eyes dotted.
Because I think the public is going to want to have these things explained to them the way we're acting, so.
It'd be great if they could make a decision the night of the public hearing. That's why I think it's really important to get the drawings in by the deadline and then. Yes.
Okay.
Good.
Is that doable? Or, because we could, if the 25th is good for the drawings?
Why don't we roll it up?
No, I'm thinking, because we, well, we, the ZBA tonight, our meeting's the 23rd, so it doesn't, but. That, that timeline works for you for drawings. Okay, okay. All right.
Make a motion for that.
Oh, yeah, did we, did I take, no one made a motion?
No.
Okay.
To move.
Okay, motion made by Don, second by Arnie, all in favor.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Okay, motion carries for the public hearing, October 7th.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks again for updating the architectures and the sign and everything.
What are they? Yeah. Um, I do not have any other business, so.
I do.
Oh, Jamie does.
No, we brought up the dates. Lisa, can you review our dates that's coming up for October?
Oh, yeah, we can't, we, yeah, change the dates. Thank you. We have not one of our meetings.
And Lisa stuck that out.
Um, so it's going to be October 7th and 21st. And then November 4th and 18th. Okay, 7th, 21st. 7th and 21.
Yeah.
November 4th and 18th. And December 9th. And then we cancel the meeting on December 23rd. And then we'll meet back again in January.
And I, I will say one more thing because I've heard a couple, a bunch of you guys didn't see the sign. I know you can't maybe check email every day, but if everybody could check their email more frequently, your town email, because then, because the sign was emailed out
Yeah, so.
last week, early, early last week.
Early, yeah.
Really early last week. So, um, just if you're not seeing things, check your email.
So on that note, Gareem can help with that. Um, when I, he came up, when I got on the planning board, so I use, I have a Mac and I have an Apple phone. And so I use their email and internet browser. So I was, I could download the Microsoft app on my phone and Outlook, I should say.
Yeah.
You can download the Outlook app on your phone and Gareem can have it set up so that you can just click on Outlook like any app on your phone and you can bring up your email and you'll even get notifications, however you want to have that set up. So you don't have to lose, it's not an extra step, but Gareem had to help me do it, so. I was very happy to do that, that way.
Yeah, I know some people don't prefer to have their email on their phone, but just in general, whether it's computer or phone, just, um, check it a little more often. Or, or see if you could go in and set your notifications so that you see if Lisa sends something, then you've got it. Um, if you prefer, I guess, Lisa, that if you prefer that email is not your first form of, like, if there's a definite chance you're not going to be checking it other than, um, the meeting day or something, let her know so then she could notify you.
She could text you and say, hey.
Check your email, yeah.
Show up at your house. I actually, I've done that before.
I tried to have that.
You used to do that all the time.